Motion to pass the September thirtieth budget. And it's.
On favor, aye, opposed. Commonwealth is not here. He thought it was last night. And couldn't make it tonight. Matt.
For September, it was kind of a busy month. I had twenty-four calls for service. Eighteen traffic stops. One background check and then a one ordinance dealing. Also had five assists for the Sheriff's Department helping out on different things. I also had a felony arrest for operating while HTV. New news, the flock cameras are up and operational now. I've been utilizing those and they've been great. So, thank you guys for those that have been a help already. Operation Pullover is officially approved and I can start working that at any time. Some of those blitzes I have to work during a particular time period. Other stuff I can just work whenever. So, I will be starting that in the near future now. So, they actually traffic my flow around town. Other than that. I did help with the parade, which was a success. My kids got to ride with me in the truck and throw out candy. I thought that was great and it seemed like that went really well. Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. Fire Department, Tom.
For September, we had four fire calls, eight EMS calls that we responded to for a total of twelve.
Jeff's not here, but you have his report?
The paving for 2025 has been completed. Two extra alleys were paved walnut to rennecker and half to main. From main to gruel. Utilities building has been painted and it has been finished today. Fall cleanup went with no, went smoothly with no problems. The water department will be completing or competing in the Indiana Best Tasting Water Contest next week in Fort Wayne. The winner will receive a sign to put in town that says Best Tasting Water in Indiana. And a trip to Washington DC to compete at the national level. We're expecting twenty-five tons of road salt to be delivered sometime in the next two weeks. No sand will be used on the streets this winter. And Jeff did receive his DSS water license and is preparing to take the next exam, WT3 exam sometime in November.
Okay. Jeff also let me know that apparently at the end of the week. The new pump that they just put in burned up and so fearless covered it. Warranty came out, replaced it. Apparently he sent me a picture, there was a bare wire that would, that was, had been rubbing against something and that's what burned everything up. So, that's been replaced at no cost to the town.
Wendy.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
We have, we collect the, or Gary, Harry and Pete, not back yet from what we said. He collected four hundred and thirty-one dollars from the beautiful, set the corn fest and that night is all in the account. And then Tristan Hensley of the FRS, she's a local business town. She's created some special LA merch shirts, we've got shirts that she's selling. And early in the time through November, thirty-five, the park seats are gonna go to the park. So, we're gonna pay the community for local business and then also support the park. There'll be more information on that at the town expo. We're gonna have a table there. And right now, that's about what we have going on.
Okay. I dropped my glasses on, so I was giving you, sorry. Court support.
All banks are reconciled and balanced. I've submitted Jeff's wages and expenses for the third quarter. To the water alliance. The amount of the reimbursement is nineteen thousand eight sixty-four oh nine, which we should receive this month. Boston's invoice for paving was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand one sixty-eight ten. And that has been paid, which was a little bit under what they had given us a quote for. The 2026 budget hearing was held on September thirtieth, 2025. The budget adoption meeting will be held on Friday, October twenty-fourth at four-thirty here at town hall. I'll be attending state call virtual, state board of accounts meeting, November fourth through the sixth. The ripple invoice for painting the barn, the board had approved fourteen thousand eight sixteen. Todd told me that he did not put the amount for painting the roof on that. And it was gonna be an additional four thousand dollars. And I just want to get approval to add that to his payment.
And it's already been done?
He spent, he said he finished it today, the painting.
Yes, so if I remember right, his bill or his bid was fourteen and change and the other bid was thirty something.
Yes, it was way below the other bid.
So, that would make the total then for his, if we added.
Eighteen eight sixteen.
Even?
Yes.
I would think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay the four thousand dollars for the painting of the park.
My second motion.
On favor, aye, opposed. It's still Wallace and the other one?
The bills for approval that I sent you, I received another invoice. Yes. Since I sent this to you last Thursday. For US Blue Book and it was nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. I wanted to add that to the bills for approval, which brings it to seventy-four thousand nine sixty-eight seventy-nine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the bills for approval, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. On favor, aye, opposed.
And we have two billing adjustments. This is for a final account that we tried to, we were, we were training. So, we tried to credit it and then the credit got messed up. So, it's two, it's two adjustments to the same account. One is a credit for twenty-seven forty-four and the other is a credit for thirteen seventy-two. And that's all of the adjustments for the month.
So, the account numbers are different, it's one-one-one and one-zero-zero.
It's supposed to be, it's, it should be the same, it's the same customer.
Which one is it?
Should be one-one.
One-one-one, okay, so it's all one-one-one. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. The credits for account two-two-seven eight zero one-one-one. For twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. On favor, aye, opposed. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, Jordan, did you and Jeff look at some issues on the?
Still talking about the details of that language.
Okay.
So, hopefully should have something next month for everyone to look at.
Do we have some, some ideas for some other towns or something that we'll use?
Yeah.
All right. If we could maybe get a look at it before, before the next meeting? Same way with the water adjustment?
Yes.
Okay. Donation of the interurban, interurban property to the town.
Hey John, you want to move me to the bottom today? I got a couple other questions.
That's fine. Either way. Uh, new business, there's nothing, agenda requests, Joe Bowman. Justin Boss. Maria.
Well, I have a couple of things. So, I'm, I have to look at you guys. I am going to be the liaison for La Fountain Community for the big March cleanup. If you could all just put that out in your calendar. And what that is, is it's a group of people from the communities, each community. And what we're going to do is ensure that we're not on the main drags. But let's look at our community to see what streets or what areas, maybe it's the parks, that we could all come together to clean. We are so fortunate to have, Republic Services will be donating hats, safety vests, roll-off boxes, trash bags. And all kinds of different receptacles to put in different areas. They are also going to be donating a dumpster. And I would need to know where we could put that, that's highly visible. We want to make sure we get some attention from that and I look to you. And this is just food for thought and then, so you can think about these kinds of things. Press releases coming out, I'll share logos and then more details. There's a, there, there will be a signup sheet. So, if you're part of a big church and maybe you can identify a location. Or if you're part of the library and maybe you have volunteers that would want to take on a certain section. I don't know if we have, like in Fort Wayne, we have an inner city community. So, do we have an inner community here? I don't think so. Blighted, I don't think so. But if, what a great way for the community to come together and do something together to beautify our community. And I'll send you some notice, some notes. Let's make eye contact. But I'll be your liaison, you'll start seeing some more information. If you have golf carts, how amazing that you could have someone getting off your golf cart and, you know, you'll have trash bags, you'll have everything you need. So, just put it in your, up here, store the information. It's in March, we don't have an exact date. I need to put together a committee to help with the effort and initiative. And hopefully we do have volunteers for that, okay? And then the second thing, well, the, yeah, second thing is this Thursday, we're gonna have a meeting here at six PM. It'll be for the discussion of the mural. I have some great news. We have raised half the funds needed for the mural. That'll be on the, I call it the utility building, the side of it. And I've spoken to Erica and she will begin, if all goes well and it's approved, the first week of June. So, that's a neat thing. Also, I'm pleased to share that we will be partnering with the fire department. And Eclectic Shop will sponsor the pumpkin carving contest. And so, we'll have some prizes for that. Then the La Fountain Community Alliance, we're going to help with a costume contest. So, bringing that back, thanks to you. And then Christmas decor discussion. We have searched, we have searched and searched for a location that would be reasonable. As you know, we're a new organization. So, funding is available a little bit. But all our efforts are going towards beautification and the mural and things to help beautify our community. So, we still haven't found a place. There was an offer made, it's a second story section of a building or a home. And I don't know how we would get some of the bigger items through those stores. So, we may have them up for one time, for one season and see how that goes. But we still do not have any kind of storage facility. And lastly, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. The state of Indiana is making a big to-do about the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday celebration. And so, the community, oh, there you are. The La Fountain Community Alliance, we're gonna come together and work on a date, bring in some music and some activities. And do something really big downtown La Fountain. With the approval, of course. Okay, and the last thing I have. Did you already pass it up?
Yes, ma'am, I emailed it to them.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. So, I was, you know, dream big or don't dream, right? So, I am requesting if the town has an additional five thousand dollars to give towards the cost of the mural painting. We have raised half of it. Five thousand would almost bring us to the final price, but we still have to raise money for the maintenance. For the first five years, you have to add, think of it as a shellac. And the prices quoted were from last year's prices. And as you know, there's been an increase in prices everywhere. So, if five thousand is not doable, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine is. Just kidding. But I leave it up to you. Like I said, dream big, I'm asking for five and hopes that.
So, what's the total cost of the mural?
The total cost of the mural is fourteen thousand dollars. We have raised seven. Where we will be having some fundraisers, we're selling t-shirts as well. But I needed to find out from the Miami, is it Nation? Miami Nation, what kind of a headdress is appropriate? Because it was my understanding that we didn't want to offend members of the community that are part of that tribe? Is that what you would say? So, I'm trying to get that information, because we want to include something like that. Something that goes along with this is on Thursday, we will announce, and you'll see it online. We're, we're gonna need a committee to come together to start doing the design of it. I would love to know what the board thinks and what your input would be towards that. I know that we've had some comments about having La Fountain, right? Spelled out and maybe some pictures behind that. But we can go bigger and.
You should reach out to the history club for some information on, if you want historical.
That was a comment that was made to me about not offending people, using the right head here and.
I'm just saying for the mural.
Yes, well.
I saw it was the town, I mean.
Sure.
Historical town, I mean, they might have, that groups of wealth of historical information.
And that would be great, I hope somebody comes in to represent that group as well. But I would love to find someone to lead the project, because it can't be just us. Thank you. This Thursday at six PM, right after the park board meeting. Because we want to have elements of all the important things and, you know, the corn stocks, the. Some kind of wooden stuff.
All right, Maria, as far as the money goes, I think we'll talk to Pam. And then maybe at the next meeting, we'll have more of an idea of what we can do.
Perfect.
And then. I don't know that I can make it Thursday, but I definitely would like to see some ideas. And then obviously, I'm assuming we'll, we'll have final approval over whatever design is. But yeah. You kind of look at me kind of funny?
No, no, actually, I, I'm hopeful that one of you could sit in on it. Because again, I want to make sure that I'm not offending people. Because I said, oh, we need to have a headdress in there, because, you know, La Fountain, La Fountain and. So, anyways, yes, of course, but it would be great if somebody could attend.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Jay, we're back to you.
That was quick.
Yep.
Back to the park thing, I've been working with Jordan. I think it was pretty much about everything worked out with the exception of I have to have him completed form eighty-two, eighty-three. By getting the back certificates from the donation.
Yep.
Which I just found out, I think in the last week, that a, a prainse has to be done. Been so many days of the donation up and down.
That's what, that's what Jordan told me.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think it was a praise.
Oh, my God.
Been waiting on you guys.
Yeah.
I think the prainse was done about a year ago.
August to twenty-four. And I, it was by Christie Lundquist. I just got an email back from her. She said she would update it by the end of the week with, for no additional charge.
No additional charge, so it'll be updated, so.
And then there's section five, I believe.
Yep. So, I got that ready to go.
Okay.
So, I think you've got the, my only copy of the resolution back there, it's had your changes. So, everybody's good, we can do that, finish the form.
We'll get you a copy before you take off.
May I have a couple other questions? Billy, you too.
All right, let's do this one first. Okay. This is a resolution number one, twenty-twenty-five, Town of La Fountain, the resolution to accept gift of real estate from La Fountain Interurban Project LLC. This will be a part of the park. I'll make a motion to accept it. You'll second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we have?
Resolution, one reading is fine.
Thank you, thank you, Jay. We appreciate your.
Okay. Some clues, okay?
Do you want to tell what he's doing?
Yeah.
So, we would like to thank Jay for donating this piece of property for the.
Thank you.
For the benefit of the park. So, we greatly appreciate your kindness, Jay. We greatly appreciate your kindness, Jay, for, and that round of applause was for you in donating this. So, thank you very much.
So, there are a few things in, in this, as part of it. We're gonna do a time capsule buried at the property upon the completion of the park. And we'll obviously try to put a lot of different things in there and hopefully have a lot of people put some stuff up in there. Represent the town. Part of the property or the property being donated will be referenced as the name, La Fountain Interurban, somewhere in the name. Approved by the donor. And bricks, Jay, do we have those bricks or do you have them or where are we gonna put them?
They're back away. He also has the cupola thing that came off the top and some other stuff that.
So. So, whenever we're ready for those, we can come get them or do you want us to get them and put them somewhere now?
As long as the streets go around.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, some bricks from the original building and the cupola from the top. Gonna somehow incorporate those into something. Yeah, those are great, those are great. Oh, it's five years. So, if we don't use it for such purpose or improvements, maybe within five years. Then the project or the property will go back to La Fountain Interurban Project or his agent. Okay, so thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Next one.
Okay, I was there several months ago and have a few questions. Y'all said you'd follow up on it, I really haven't heard one was. Who's responsible for the trees and the brush from hanging the ropes in the alleys that have to be up on the ground now? I get stuff like every day with my equipment, I don't really try to go down the alleys.
If it's on public property, then it's the homeowners or the alleys, homeowner's responsibility, so.
I've been talking with Jeff about that. There's several that are super close to the road that I think probably won't be town's property. That I think the town is responsible for. And then the ones that are actually on the property that are, aren't in the easement area, I think are probably the homeowner's responsibility. I did drop off several letters, probably five or six of them, within the last couple of weeks at different houses where I saw that being an issue. I know Jeff is gonna work towards getting several others cut, he probably the town's responsibility.
But there's one that you know of, Jay, that Matt hasn't, will you let him know which ones you're thinking of?
The one I had is the time, I think, most of us were from this and they could get down the road.
Okay.
It's just a fear right after when they were.
Okay.
I did hit with the truck.
Okay.
So, it's cleaned up, it's cleaned up already?
Well, that one, for now.
At least I don't hear it with my pickup.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I did with my equipment if I went through it.
Okay.
Or something like a garbage truck or a bus. And that would be by Bobby Solers.
Oh, by Bobby's, the tree hanging down? I'm sure that's, that's Bobby's tree, so. Might check on that again, just make sure. Right through the curve, right through the park or the curve. Yeah, Solers.
Oh, got you, okay.
The other one I had, a couple launched back was, there's still a couple of sanitary sewers that have a big fix from the smoke test. And the only reason I know that's because I was involved in plugging those and no work's been done. Requires excavation. But I didn't know if you was following up on those or?
My understanding was everything was fixed and completed. So, if there hasn't been something that I don't, that we don't know about, but we, we were told everything was fixed, completed and finalized.
Well, I, I know two that's not.
Okay, will you give me the addresses for those?
I mean, it's not my job to do a good job.
Oh, I, I understand, but as I said, if we were.
And those, those homes has changed hands probably at least twice.
Okay.
Since that's been done, so the current homeowner will probably have no idea.
Okay. So, like I said, we, we were told everything was finalized and closed and it was completed.
And then one that just came up just now, I guess you painted the roof on the town garage. Did you do any research into that before you painted that? And the reason I ask is because when that roof was put on four or five years ago, it had a thirty-year warranty. And I just got this feeling that once you painted it, you voided the warranty on the roof.
I'm not aware of anything.
I, I know it had a thirty-year warranty.
Okay.
That was part of their, part of what we agreed to, Lori and whoever was in Janet.
I don't remember the roof being replaced, so it must have been before me.
That was one of the big deals when we come through.
Is there something wrong with the roof now?
They painted it, they painted it so they painted.
It's been, maybe it's been redone once.
Structurally, or whether anything.
Okay.
Like after a year and a half, so it got redone, that's the only reason I can remember. And then last, I have a few tiny little questions, I got a paper for you here. Built lines, pretty much the same issue I had the last time.
Just copies for each of you.
Thank you.
Now, I know y'all putting meters in, I think I was one of the first ones to get one because. I mean, if you look on the paper down on line fourteen in column A, you'll see that I had a meter installed and for the month. And the present reading, the end of that one's reading was two thousand fifty-six gallons, but I got invoiced for two thousand six hundred fifty-six. So, my first question would be where did the extra six hundred gallons come from when I got invoiced? And these numbers are right off my utility bills, just in a format that's on one page you need to use, see.
Was there any difference in the reading from the estimation to the reestimation at that time?
Yeah, I don't know, it was.
Do you, do you see what I'm talking about?
I see what you're talking about, I just, I, I don't have an answer for you right this second.
No, no, I probably didn't expect you.
Yeah. But I do see what you're saying, so there's six hundred difference.
Right, so then if you follow that down, the next month, they estimated, so that overbilled me. Because supposedly when you estimate, you take the three-month average, so since you overbilled me six hundred gallons first month or the month before. I estimate overpaid. And then here's the real weird thing, if you look down on six, length sixteen A over to column D. That six hundred gallons got added back in on the front side of my bill. If you look, if you look on column fifteen on E, it says fifty-one fifty-six. That number should transfer down to the column D on the next line, and it says fifty-seven fifty-eight. So, somehow that six hundred got added back in, which subtracted gallons. Which wouldn't be a problem, but then y'all know how the, the system works. When you have a residential meter, you get, it's not two thousand gallons, but roughly two thousand gallons from paying the minimum. It took me below the minimum at sixteen forty-four, so I got overcharged the previous two months. Got the six hundred subtracted, but I still didn't get my two thousand gallons that I paid when I paid the minimum. If that makes sense, it does to me. But I don't know how that six hundred gallons got added in. When the meter says one thing and my consumption reads something else, which everybody knows, and nobody can change the utility billing unless the council approves it. So, in effect, that gallons being changed affected my dollar amount.
Can I ask a question? Which month are you saying you didn't hit the two thousand?
If you look down on column A fourteen, I have a meter, it says the present reading was two thousand fifty-six, do you see that, Jordan?
Yeah, do you think that's right?
That is right. I mean, that's, as far as I know, that's right, because that's what my utilities bill says. But then when you look over on the total. on the total consumption, I got built for twenty-six fifty-six.
But they carried over the correct number to the next month, right?
They did, so it makes absolutely no sense. And then if you go down a couple lines, Jordan, where the one that says fifty-one, fifty-six is in column E.
Yep.
This didn't get carried down, they got a six hundred gallons added in.
Which credits you six hundred gallons?
Which credits, the way the system works. I've paid above the minimum for the previous two months, but then it dropped me below the minimum gallons usage. So I paid for gallons.
Oh, I see.
That I didn't use, but I didn't...
So which, but again, which month did you not use two thousand?
I didn't say that.
So you used two thousand in each of these months?
I can't tell you because those are the numbers that we reported. But I will tell you one thing, I got on the software, the website, you know, the town has, and I entered the service dates under column D for just the last two months, because that's the only two I can enter. And I used less than twenty-seven hundred gallons according to that, but I got built for twenty-seven hundred. It looks like that they got rounded up. So I got, I got, you know, the actual consumption on line seventeen was, on the F was twenty-seven hundred, but when I went to that ion water, entered the from July eighteenth to August seventeenth, it said I only used twenty-six seventy-two, so that number got rounded up to twenty-seven hundred. And I'm just going off of the numbers that the town supplied me or I have access on their software, and then last month's bill or this month's bill, one due this month. I got built for twenty-seven hundred and when I went to that ion water, it said during that month, during that window, I only used twenty-five ninety-two for gallons. And it got rounded up. So there's either a timing problem with when the bill is, the meter's read for the bill, which I would assume it's all in the system and read at the same time. I know for a fact that on the ion water that I can get to being a customer, it gets read at twenty-three fifty-nine fifty-nine. I don't know when the town reads the bill, but I would assume just for continuity, it would be at the same time, so you wouldn't have a problem.
I can say that there were a handful of customers that had the same exact problem when they, their new meter was installed. And we asked the installers or peerless to come out, we'd asked Matt to come out, and he went out and checked those and there were problems with those meters. And they had strange readings like this is here. And we were able to adjust that and fix it, but there were probably about six meters that they had to readjust that weren't reading correctly. So that may be what the problem was. And up to the new meter being installed, we were estimating and that messed things up a little bit too, so...
But you didn't estimate the three months prior to the new meter being installed.
What?
You didn't estimate prior to the new meters being installed for three months. The last estimate was on line ten. That was four months before my new meter was installed.
Right, but we estimated before your new meter, before four seventeen, we were estimating.
Not according to your billing warrant.
Okay.
Because you did not have the E after the...
Well, we'll certainly have Matt look at it. I would say that it's probably a misreading like the handful that we had previously. And we're just now catching it, but we did have some that had, the reads were not correct on it.
Jay, is this at your house or your business or, like, residence on, so they did Meadow first, I believe?
Yeah, I think they, when Jeff come through and whoever that guy was, he said that was gonna be the first test.
Yeah.
Area first.
Yeah.
Which still doesn't explain why the ion water and the water bill doesn't...
No.
Exactly, I mean, it should have, just because of the given the customers' access to check the bill, it should be right during those
Yep.
Service dates.
Yep, and so...
And one more thing, if you look on column B, under the service dates, if you look down to like line fourteen to fifteen, you'll see on line fourteen, they read the meter on five nineteen, and then on line fifteen, they started the next service date at five eighteen, that's, that just leads people, I know how the system works, but that leads people to believe that they're getting double billed for that day, for two days.
Okay.
And if you go to the top, you'll see the same thing, they entered it on the twentieth, they started on the twentieth. I'm convinced that nobody reads your utility bill, but if you did, it would lead you to believe that you could be getting double billed because the dates overlap. So if you would, when you figure that out, I think I should have a refund, of course. Just so everybody knows, not only is the water portion wrong, but also the wastewater, since it's based off the water. Is incorrect also.
Okay.
So if you find something out, I appreciate you letting me know, because probably needs to be straightened out.
We will, here with Matt, probably have them come out and look at your meter. Was there any other on Meadow that you know of that, Matt, have you looked at yours?
I've not looked.
It's real easy to do.
Yeah, I don't even, should, I don't even have the app on my phone to look at it yet.
No, we got the answer.
Yeah, I just haven't.
Yeah.
I'm a little busy, yours, my friend.
No, Jay, we'll look into it, figure out what's going on with it and then get back to you and...
Yeah, I should get some down here, definitely, I mean, it's not a whole lot.
Illegal, it most certainly is. Because I researched that with the state of Indiana. And that applies to the town of Walma, or Town of La Fountain. And as long as it's established for the Town of La Fountain, you're not supposed to advertise anything else on it. It's, the state won't say anything. They won't give you permit, because I tried with the other one, they won't give you permit, but they will allow it because it's basically designed to identify the town. Any other signs? If they're not grandfathered, they don't have a license, they're illegal. But the state of Indiana looks kind of like this. If it's community service, then they look the other way. So that's how the Lions Club is filing a curse sign out there.
So don't ask for permission, just ask for forgiveness. Okay, anything else?
I'd like to just make a quick note that we lost signal at the last part of our live feed, so keep a watching that, you know, that's what happened.
Okay. Technology. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know, anyways, I have a sidewalk in front of my house.
Okay.
And I was told that, like, it is my responsibility, but I needed to come to this meeting to ask if I can take it out because I call it the sidewalk of death, because it's that buckle and it's nasty and it's old and it doesn't even span my whole property. And I would just like to take it out and put, like, fill it in with dirt, because none of my other neighbors even have a sidewalk or anything.
What's your name and where do you live, sir?
Chris Weaver, and I live on Grant Street.
Grant, where at on Grant Street?
One oh four East Grant Street.
So it's right there at the corner?
No, not really, it's close to the corner, it's, there's just an empty lot next to my house. And then, like, one neighbor on one side and the other side is an empty lot.
I think it's Charles Whittens.
Yeah, you live in Charles Whittens' old house?
It's like Saint...
Yeah, I don't know if you Charles Whittens.
I don't remember who Charles Whittens is, so, I apologize.
You know, I had a house like that stuff a few years ago, John?
Yeah.
On the same side west.
Okay, all right. I think the sidewalks are your responsibility and I think if you have a sidewalk, you're supposed to replace it, but I gotta be honest, I'm not confident. There's no sidewalks up there? Is it really covered in dirt or grass or?
It's all, and half of the, like, panels are covered in dirt and grass and stuff.
I didn't know there was any sidewalks on that side of the road.
I own the lot next to, there's no sidewalks on it yet.
None of my neighbors have sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think, there's none on one twelve, which is the house east of it, but I haven't had for a while.
All right. Yeah, I don't probably think there's any reason why you can't, but I guess I'm not gonna sit here and say for sure. So I guess I need to look at it and, or see what, see what it looks like. Still gotta visualize which house it is, so...
Take a picture if you want to see it.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Or some of it, some of it just looks like grass.
Okay, what do you guys think?
Well, when I purchased the property from the sale, tax sale, they had taken the sidewalk out and the county said I did not have to replace it, that was my choice, if I wanted to replace it or not, so.
I'm gonna allow Lindy Piersy to take her sidewalk out.
Okay. Well, I guess there's precedent on that, so if there's no one around there, then I guess I don't have a problem with it.
He has to go through the planification and replace that sidewalk, since it's construction.
There was, they took it out, so I didn't have, I don't have to replace it because they took it out before I tried, when I tried to...
Before she bought it, so...
Before I bought it.
So, yeah, I don't have a problem with, just make sure that there's nothing around there, might call to the eight-one-one if you don't want to hit a line or anything else, or you're pulling it out, so...
We're gonna try to get a sidewalk program together some one of these days, but we haven't had the budget to...
Not yet, but trying to get there. Anybody else? Make a motion adjourned?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?